All right, I'm going to call counsel to order. Sorry Andrea, did you need me beforehand?
Are you sure?
Yeah. Yeah, we're good. All right. So I'm just going to call to order at 7:01 PM. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Sailors people. I will call to order. And then I am actually looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Thank you, moved by Counsel Kobayashi, seconded by Counsel Parkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Public participation? I'd like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address counsel, to present concerns, or ask questions of counsel. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaw related to the matter has not been presented to counsel for consideration of adoption. There is a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for public participation. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers an opportunity to speak to counsel.
My name is Doug Willoughby. I live at 338 Asmink. Your worship, Mayor Martin, esteemed counselors, staff. The...I'm speaking on the moving of the food truck eats or Friday and Saturday event that I see is going to be moving or potentially moving halfway down Ocean Boulevard. I think it's an excellent idea. It will alleviate traffic problems that are frequent at the Lagoon roadside. I go down there quite often and I see what it can be, a nightmare for parking, et cetera, blah, 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 blah. Halfway along, we're at the Eats and Beats site, will be excellent. It will also act as a invisible speed buffer as well to slow people down along Ocean Boulevard. So there's a benefit there. One concern I have that wasn't mentioned was the provisions with the porta-potties for handicapped people. That must be put in place because there are an awful lot of mobility challenged and handicapped people that do go down during the day, especially for the food trucks. And they also use those benches that are by the existing permanent washrooms. I think those benches should stay and then at the new location, some other additional picnic benches should be added to that and make it easy for mobility for all people concerned. So I sent a letter to you all. I hope you've read it and it outlines in more detail of my thoughts on this thing, but I'm 100% in favor of moving it. I think it will not only enhance the event, it may offer a potential for future enhancements with maybe craft sales or something along with the food trucks. We're trying to promote Callwood Beach. It's an excellent way of doing it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you Doug. And we, as you said, it's on the agenda this evening, so Will, I've made a note to make sure we ask that question to staff as we move forward. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment this evening? I'm going to give you guys one last chance in case somebody's shy and doesn't look like it. All right, so moving on to four, mayor's message. First of all, obviously, we would like to acknowledge the loss of Oak Bay's previous mayor, Mayor Jensen, who passed away over the weekend. Counsel has shared their condolences with Oak Bay's mayor and we are sad that a person of his stature who made a large contribution to the Greater Victoria area has left us, but he has made our community better for his work. I'd also, a couple of other things that I just would like to share. All of counsel was able to attend the volunteer appreciation that we had yesterday. And yesterday, we recognized many of our Callwood volunteers who sat on committees with a lunch reception and presentation of awards. Our community is much stronger because residents generally contribute their and share their time and talents with us and we very much appreciate that as a counsel. A couple of things just that is happening within our community. On April 12th, we have the Victoria Spring Home Expo that's happening at West Shore Park and Rec. On April 13th, the Callwood Women's Institute Garage Sale is happening at the Callwood Community Hall from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There is an Easter egg hunt at Meadow Park in Royal Bay on April 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And I would encourage all the counsel, if you can, to put that on your schedule and to attend. It's...yeah, there's...yeah, there will be an Easter bunny this year, but as mayor, I will be there as mayor, so I'm not sure who. I'm sure the Easter bunny's coming, I'm just not sure who. And then finally, just as a quick reminder as well, May 5th is happening, the 12th Annual Emergency Preparation Fair, happening at West Shore Park and Rec. Number five, adoption and receipt of minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt one set of minutes for the regular meeting of counsel held March 25th?
Move adoption, your worship.
Thank you, moved by Counsel Logan, seconded by Counsel Baxter. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? 6.1, presentations. South Island Prosperity Project. I will invite Bruce Williams and Dallas, and forgive me Dallas, I'm not sure your last name.
Dallas Gislassen.
Thank you.
So we're going to set a tag team this. Is the PowerPoint alive and well?
No.
It's on ours, is it not on yours?
No. I see. I could sketch something as we go along, maybe, just people in the background. We could come to that side, too. Oh, there we go, yeah, that'll work. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Maybe I'll stand over there. It's nice to be back. The last time I was in these chambers, I was here for your inaugural meeting where I gapped out and said that Belmont School was here instead of Royal Bay School, so we won't make that mistake again. I'll make other mistakes instead, trust me. So we just want to quickly tell you how we'll go through this tonight here. We're going to give you a little bit of historic context for SIP. Some of you know, some of you don't. Some of the progress we've made until date, to date rather, and where are we going next? Next, we're going to the next page. There we go. So, set up in April 2016, so we're now ending our third fiscal year for South Island Prosperity, began with 10 municipalities, a region-wide collaborative approach to economic development with these goals. With the understanding that there wasn't really a regional piece in play, municipalities were doing their own thing, but to have everybody working collectively like this was something that was a goal that we had. So we sort of extracted a committee of the Chamber of Commerce into what this organization became and grew it from there. The future of jobs, that's what it's all about. That is our economy, jobs that are clean, high-paying, effective, sustainable. Economic development for our First Nations partners is a huge priority for this organization as more and more opportunities happen all the time on all sectors and on all different platforms. We want to be there at the leading edge of that. And of course, increase provincial and federal government funding to this region to get some of our money back that has gone downtown or gone to Ottawa. We want to make sure that that comes back and is invested in this municipality and in all of our general municipal regions in a way that's effective and sustainable. So we may have 13 distinct municipalities with their 13 distinct characters, but we are one economy. We are one economy going back, like, I don't know how many municipalities you may travel through on an average day. My wife and I live in View Royal, we spend time going through Sanich, we go through Esquimalt, we get into Victoria, we come out here, we all travel everywhere. That's an indicator of how we are one economy. That's eight large employers alone surveying their office by their location and where the employees live. So that kind of shows you where people are going every day, that we are one large South Island central economy. So this organization works together to be that body representing this one economy and what it can mean, what it can represent and how it can grow collectively with everybody involved. That is our membership group right now. Three years ago, we started up with 29 members. We now have 52 and that's going to be growing increasingly as time goes by. We have a number of people that are pending with their membership right now, aligning with fiscal years and the rest of it. We're continuing to get regional buy-in, we're continuing to build momentum. Our name changed as of April 1st, and that's not a joke. We went from the South Island Prosperity Project to the South Island Prosperity Partnership. The project sort of has an end date. We're not anticipating an end date, we want this partnership to continue and grow as much as we possibly can. So, on this page, you will see, building our foundation, we did a number of things through public consultation. We hosted some industry and stakeholder roundtables to form early strategies as to how is this region exceptional within Canada, right? We are the most beautiful, we have the best climate, we have the best weather, but we have unique elements in our economy and in our skillset, in our ability to grow and work together. That's something we took a look at. That led to the creation of the Smart South Island process, which was our submission into the Canadian Smart Cities competition that's underway now. We will get that decision, by the way, May 14th is when we find out. We are a finalist for that $10 million prize, May 14th is when we find out. So we're shortlisted for that $10 million grant. Side benefits are already happening, including a number of remarkable awards that we've been given internationally. People around the world are understanding our governance and our intent and what we're doing and how impressive that is. First Nations economic development, as I mentioned, is a huge priority for us as it is for everyone across this country. We are regional leaders in that role. Economic reconciliation as a process is what we're working with here. We had two First Nations when we began, we now have seven. We are anticipating two more to join us shortly to bring us to nine of the 10 First Nations in this region, which we consider a major achievement. And with that, we're going to make sure that that kind of growth keeps on going. One of the things that we have planned, I will talk about shortly, but that is to gather all 10 of those nations in one place for the beginning of a conversation about economic building, economic resilience, and economic reconciliation. The next slide is something that my friend Dallas does all the time. I'm going to hand that over to him to talk about this part of what we do for business growth.
Yeah, thanks Bruce. Just quickly, good evening, Mayor and Counselor, counsel. So business growth and attraction, it's another major pillar of the work that we do. And just two touchpoints on this. We tend to focus mostly on companies that are sort of growth oriented or export oriented. And the reason we do that is to attract what we call first dollar, it's the first dollar industry. So it's the companies that are bringing in wealth that then circulates in the region and that's what we see doctors and lawyers and realtors and all the rest of the sort of the bulk of the economy. So with limited resources, we do focus mostly on export development and companies that have that potential. And then the second component of this program or program area of our day-to-day operations is building the, what we call an inbound attraction pipeline. And so you can see on the slide there where we sort of emphasize the Cascadia region as our primary target audience for that. And so we established that, it took us about 18 months really of exploratory. We went down to Silicon Valley, we went to Seattle a couple of times, we did a couple of trade delegations to China and did a whole bunch of sort of market research on this and really determined that a key opportunity for us is to position within this Cascadia region. And one of the reasons is that the Cascadia region is actually, if it were a country, would be the 22nd largest country in the world by GDP. So it's a fairly large substantial region, that's not including California. If we include California, then it shoots up to close to probably the fifth or fourth largest in the world, believe it or not. But anyway, so we have two, we have two sort of wins in that early exploratory, a company called Ditan, which is actually based in Brazil, but their, the reason why they came up to Canada is that they want to service their California client base from the same time zone without being in the United States because of the Trump administration. And that's not a joke, that's actually the reason why. It's Canada's progressive culture in terms of welcoming of immigrants and also our immigration sort of policies that really align to help them grow that company from right here. And the other one is a company called Net Motion, which was a company that we met with in Seattle that determined this market as being sort of similar situation, bit of a smaller footprint ultimately than Ditan, but anyways, the point is that we're just getting started by building that pipeline and the more that we work that pipeline, the more success we'll have.
Where are we going next? Well, we have a four-year operational plan, our ops plan will be released shortly, we're just finishing that off right now. It'll be released around the time of our AGM, which is June 25th, if you'd like to join us for that. We move that around every year because we are a regional organization. Last year, our AGM was in Callwood. This year, the AGM will be in Sydney, so we hope you can join us for that. Heyday's a good day to drive up the peninsula. All of that will be available on the website shortly, too. I'm going to hand it back to Dallas for the next one here to talk about the value chain.
Yeah, this is just a snapshot from the ops plan, just to show you sort of how all these pillars that we're talking about today all fit into a strategic, into alignment towards the strategic goals that we mentioned on the first slide. And that really is the, what's the future of job creation in this region? That's the ultimate reason why we exist. To put it another way, does your constituent, do their children and grandchildren have the ability to live here and work here 10 years from now, 20 years from now? That's really the big strategic question. And so everything that we do is sort of driving towards that ultimate, that ultimate goal.
So as a public-private partnership, our membership structure is unique in that we have private business, we have nonprofits, post-secundaries, municipalities, and industry associations with us here. We are, as I said, at the number right now of 52 members, that's soon going to be closer to 60. We're now taking a look at the fact that this is not an organization that will continue to grow exponentially because that would probably make it less effective, quite frankly. The members that we have on the private side are the major employers in this region, they are the stakeholders in the economy, they are the economy. So at some point, this number will cap out. If I had to guess, I would say it would be probably 75 will be the maximum number to make that an effective and efficient group that will make these things happen. And retaining municipal buy-in relative to the Canadian peer cities, too. We're going to do an organizational review this year, just to find out for sure we're going where we need to go and that the future looks bright and sustainable and smart. First Nations economic development, 17,000 indigenous people live here, we need to make sure that they have access to this economy. There are a number of challenges for them. Everything is simple as mobility, connectivity through technology, a big part of what we're doing in our Smart City submission is a mobility and transportation program, a pilot that will be specifically for our indigenous and First Nation population. Your neighbors in Beecher Bay, for example, have no transit service, they have no wireless service, they have people that are hitchhiking to and from places of education to get the services, to access healthcare. It's not fair, it's not right, they can't access education, they can't access the quality of life that they deserve. We need to make that happen and that's a big key in connecting them with our economy. The Indigenous Prosperity Gathering will happen in November of this year, that's our goal, to get all 10 of our First Nations together in a room to have an open, frank conversation about what's working for you, what's not, what are your challenges, what do you need, how can we help you, what connections do you need, what can you do with and for each other, and how can we help you become exactly everything that you should and can be? So we want to do that to get joint ventures organized and also to get them working with each other if that is their will. We do this all respectful of their own wishes, will, and desires, but we want to be the catalyst that helps make that happen. I think I'm giving this back to you now. Yes, back to Alice.
So I mentioned a minute ago about this, the pipeline focused on the kind of the Greater Cascadia region. And I wanted to point out something that we're discovering over time, and that is that local governments have a role in this. And not that that's a surprise to anybody, but it should happen at two levels. There's a local level to sort of building this pipeline and being in sort of investment-ready, let's call it, making Callwood investment-ready. And the second one would be the regional level, so it's positioning our region within British Columbia, within this Cascadia region, within the Canadian footprint. And so we see our role really as the regional level, but we also have a role in ensuring that our municipal partners are investment-ready as well as our First Nation partners are investment-ready. So this year, we're launching a pilot project with the township of Esquimalt. And we're calling it, it's called a roadmap to local economic development. And as you know, Esquimalt and Callwood are probably the few examples in this region that actually have an economic development strategy. And so our job is to look at those investment, or sorry, those economic development strategies that are locally driven for Callwood and Esquimalt and figure out how do we activate them at the regional level. So that's going to be, we're doing that in a partnership with Esquimalt and we think Callwood can be a part of that work as early as possible so that we can build sort of a roadmap or a playbook, or what do you want to call it, to do effective economic development at both a regional and a local level. The last thing that we'll touch on today is an area that is building out of our Smart Cities work, and that is something called cluster development. So if you look at sort of effective economic development strategy, two things. One is developing effective value propositions that really position you strongly. And the second one is, what are you not doing? And that's probably the most important question in strategy, according to Professor Michael Porter at Harvard, is effective strategy is, a lot of it is what you don't do. And especially in the context of limited resources. So this year, we're building out this sort of focused cluster approach. And the four key sectors that we're focusing on this year and moving forward will be oceans and marine, smart and digital, so that's where our Smart Cities work fits, value-added agriculture, as well as cultural industries. The last one, just to touch on that, really is about building out the lifestyle brand that this region has, so it's attracting people that are going to move here or have moved here because they want to live here, right? So it's that, it's ability to sort of tie in our culture and our indigenous side of that as well, to attract people and investment. So watch for more stuff, we're actually working over the next two months around a whole bunch of strategy for this. We've engaged a couple of consultants in this and it'll be rolling out over the next two months. And then with the Smart Cities, when we win the 10 million, that'll be part of positioning that, positioning our region to, I mean, 10 million is not very much money when you're talking about transportation, but for us, it's really about building the foundation, it's turning that 10 into a 20 million and then that builds the foundation that enables a whole bunch of other stuff to happen. So it's a whole domino effect as we see it.
So that's pretty much about it. One thing that we're always aware of is that the articulation of what economic development is has always been a bit of a challenge. There are people that will kind of gloss over because they think it's too deep, they don't want to understand it, or they're tired of the term. That's the reason why we named this organization with the word prosperity instead of economic development, because that's our outcome. Prosperity is inclusive, it's effective, it's sustainable, and that's what we want to do with this region and with your support. We continue to do that all the time. So we want to say thank you for your support to date. The mayor was the rep for the last few years and Counsel Kobayashi is with us now as the rep from Callwood and has been very engaged and we appreciate that very much, too. So we're open for questions, if you have any. The tough ones go to him and I'll answer the rest.
Thank you Bruce. I will go to counsel. Does counsel have any questions? Counsel Parkinson?
So we've all heard the expression of getting a little dated now, but of Victoria's being the home of the newlywed and the nearly dead. And I think, you know, in practical terms, that means is we do have the universities, we have a lot of young people here, that's great. We also have a lot of people coming here at the later part of their careers. I think they're probably drives out some of the younger people and that those, you know, opportunities they might move up to are taken by people moving back here. Just wondering what you're seeing on that to sort of call it, call them the middle-range good jobs, how you're attracting more of those.
Yeah, that's a great question. So you're right, so within the next five years, this region will have, 25% of our population will be over 65. Right now, it's 21. something percent, which is way above the national average and the provincial average. So we are, we are an older population, for sure. But a lot of people are surprised to know that our second fastest-growing cohort is actually 30 to 39. So if you look at the statistics and as well as the labor force projections, you start to see that there are opportunities for younger people. Our target audience for attracting people is actually not people in their 20s. We think people, a lot of people, when they graduate, should go experience the world. The key that we're seeing, and we've talked to a lot of employers about this, is that they want to attract people when they're, when they're sort of getting to that sort of late 20s, early 30s sort of, sort of age range, when they, they start to think about, if they grew up here, start to think about coming back. Or if they're living in somewhere like Vancouver or Seattle, they want to start slowing, slowing down a bit and get more values-driven about their lifestyle and sort of what's important to them. And so we're, all of our value propositions are built out around with that in mind. So for example, one thing we talk about is our, is our average commute time, which is, which is lower than the Canadian average and certainly a lot lower than it would be in Vancouver. And so we have a, all of our strategies, we talked about the collateral on these, on these four target sectors, are all built around that sort of 30 to 45 sort of age range when we look at attracting people.
We want to make sure we stay connected with post-secundaries, too, as their graduates emerge into the market, we want to make sure they have opportunity to stay here. That's also an important part of retaining those skills and talents here. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Counsel Kobayashi?
I'll ask the question because it's probably on people's minds right now. Perception, there's some industries, software development companies, and I think the other one's communications, is it not? Communications company, the other one that you've attracted to come here to Victoria. Okay, so I guess the question is, it's basically, perception is that we're all in this together right now, but yet everything seems to be Victoria-centric. Everything seems to locate there. So how do we get ourselves on a, on a level playing field so that we can compete? So it's a, it's a, it's an honest question.
Sure. So as, as we attract more and more opportunities here and more and more jobs and more and more companies here, they will become aware of things outside of Victoria. That's, that's a fact. Proximity to housing, cost of living, transport time. I know that you're in the process of doing some interesting things here with a company that starts with O and you're developing something out here that will give opportunity for people to locate businesses in this region. And as we bring those companies in, we want to make sure that you are continually engaged with them. And the other part of it, Counsel Kobayashi, you and I spoke about this another time, that there's a body within our organization called the Partners Committee, which is the municipalities and the nonprofits. And that committee has been very much front and center as we've been doing a number of things, which has been chaired by Mayor Lisa Helps of Victoria. She's leaving that post and it's going to be a counselor from Esquimalt named Ken Armour that's going to come in and chair that, so that will no longer be that sort of optic of being Victoria-centric. And Dallas may want to add.
Yeah, I just want to one, I just want to be really candid and honest with you about something. When we're talking with companies that are not on the island today, it's typically, in fact, it's almost impossible that you'll see a manufacturing company move from another city to the island. It's very, very rare. In fact, I can't think of an example in this region of a manufacturer, of which there are only about 100 in the entire South Island, that moved here from somewhere else. That doesn't mean their investment didn't come from somewhere else, or the ownership group, or they weren't, went through an M&amp;A or something like that. But to see that happen is very rare. I think what, what we'll see more of is that as opportunities come to market in, in Callwood and other places, is that you need to be positioning those within the region very strongly. And I think that's, that's kind of the part of the role that we'll play with, with your projects. But when, when we talk about like these examples of companies that have moved here from somewhere else, it's very rare that they're going to be in manufacturing or like a, you know, something that's going to be in industrial park. So a lot of the companies that you see that have been successful here, like Schneider Electric, for example, Schneider is here because they bought a company called Power Measurement, which was a UVic spinoff, right? And now they have 400, 500 employees, right? Viking Air is successful because they went from a service firm and acquired the De Havilland design rights and then now they, now they manufacture and sell those planes worldwide. They went from 180 employees to over 500, right? So that's the sort of stuff that's exciting. And as those companies expand, Callwood needs to be positioned for them to set up an office here or decide, or you know, divide their supply chain or as they outgrow facilities on Keating or in Rock Bay or in other parts, Callwood's ready to take them.
Thank you, Counsel Day.
Thank you. I just wondered if you could give us an update on your recent submission on transportation.
Sure, we can both do that. It's in. When it was in on time and it's, it's all posted on our website. If you want to do some really intense reading, it's 68 pages, I think, something like that. Something like that. But there's a video that goes along with it to explain it, too. But it's been put in, we, we could speculate all day long about our chances. We've looked at it from a number of different perspectives. There are other ones based on transportation across the country. We're the only private-public partnership, we think that's a huge strength for us. We also feel that one of the criteria in this is that it has to be scalable to any municipality or area across the country. And ours is ultimately scalable, it can happen anywhere. You can put it in Moose Jaw, put it in Brandon, put it in North Bay, it's still going to work with the, all of the elements that are moving around that. Some of the others, frankly, are not that scalable, they don't really work. We don't think that politics will be a part of this, but having said that, there are three finalists in British Columbia, one at the $50 million level and two at the 10 million level. So there are a number of factors involved in that. One of the other benefits we think we might have is that we have an MOU with Montreal, which brings us another enhancement element with the transportation model, also brings a francophone element into it. But we address persons with disabilities, seniors, young people, indigenous, all of the things that involve transportation to and from the areas where we all live. And we like our chances a lot, quite honestly. But if you get a chance, at least go on and watch the video online. But that's kind of the, the general take. What do you think?
Well, I guess, just to summarize the proposal for anybody in the gallery that's not familiar, the project is a smart mobility project that essentially what it does is it enables us to unify the entire mobility and transportation system into a unified system. So both from a planning perspective as well as a user experience perspective for someone traveling. And the idea is to make it clean, convenient, affordable, and all those things to get people, give people the option to not be reliant on a single occupancy vehicle for travel. One thing I do want to address, though, is that we often get asked, where does LRT fit in your plan? In fact, someone asked us that today. And they said, why isn't LRT in your plan? us that today. And they said, why isn't LRT in your plan? Our plan is not about infrastructure. So it's not about deciding what, what happens in Callwood and infrastructure. That's your job. Our job is to do whatever, whatever our, our local leaders want to do. We're going to, we're going to fit it into the plan. So the plan is flexible, it's agile, it's iterative. It's based on, on sort of as, as new things emerge, new technologies emerge, new market entrants come, everybody's, everybody's plugged in. So it's a very sort of tech-agnostic and place-agnostic and mode-agnostic program.
Great. I think we are good. Thank you, thank you for taking the time to come and let us know what you guys are working on.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thanks.
We're open to a call anytime.
Excuse me. Moving on. Eight point one, old business. Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce. The Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce provided a presentation to council about the benefits of membership for the City of Callwood at the regular meeting held on March eleventh. Because we don't normally make decisions based on delegations, I've decided to bring this item back and give council an opportunity to discuss the potential benefits or pitfalls to joining the Victoria Chamber. What I would like to do is I have a motion that I would like to present. If I get a mover and a seconder, then we can discuss it. If I don't get a mover and seconder, then we're just going to move on to the next issue. Sorry? Yes, I'm, I'm just going to read it, though, so that, that everybody hears what the motion is going to be. Thank you, councillor Day. So the motion that I'm suggesting is that council become a member of the Greater Victoria Chamber of Commerce at an annual cost of one thousand ninety-five dollars, to be funded through the corporate memberships. Do I have a mover? Do I have a mover? Do I have a seconder? And it looks like I do not, so I will move on. Thank you. Nine point one, recommendations from Committee of the Whole, February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Two recommendations were made at the Committee of the Whole meeting, held on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. The recommendations were brought forward by councillor Parkinson and have been deferred to this meeting so that he could be present to speak to these prior to consideration. Let's start with the first one, dealing with waterfront erosion. Councillor, following councillor Parkinson's introduction, I would like to hear from staff on where the city is with respect to the waterfront erosion projects. Councillor Parkinson, would you like to introduce your recommendation, your first recommendation, please?
Sure. I think, I think we could all agree that the beach is, is a vital and cherished part of our community. And right now, I think it's subject to a, a complex set of issues, including that there's a lack of the source material that used to feed the beach. We're dealing with sea level rise. There, I think we can predict some more active storms in the future, perhaps leading to higher storm surges, and lately, a possible introduction of a breakwater to accommodate a ferry service of some kind. The city has critical infrastructure there at risk, including the bridge, the roadway, the sewage lift station, and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, a boardwalk connecting Ocean Boulevard to Royal Bay. Previous council had, had a meeting considered relocating the lift station and also placing a large quantity of sand on the beach to protect the lift station temporarily. This, this sand, I think the reports suggested, might have a ten-year lifespan if it was placed there. I, I, I have trouble understanding the rationale to do both of those. It should be an either-or, or a one now, one later. You know, I just don't know what the, what the best timing would be on those two things. And I think that, that there's a number of things down there that we need to determine. We need to obviously discuss when the lift station needs to be relocated, how long the bridge will last, how long the roadway will last. And, and we have to recognize that all these things are not, not so much time-dependent as they are sea level and climate-dependent. So, you know, we don't say the bridge will last ten years. We say the bridge will last until the sea level rises thirty centimeters, whatever it may, whatever that number may be. And I don't know what those numbers are. But I think it's a, it's a very complex issue. I was proposing that we would set up a, a small task force that's skilled and focused. I think that probably we would want to compose that of two or three members of council, hopefully two or three knowledgeable and interested citizens. We would obviously need to incorporate senior engineering staff, and I think we would need a coastal engineer of some, some, some depth of knowledge to, to sit as part of that, at probably at a cost. I think there would be some budget required for this committee to make sure we have the proper level of advice. And yeah, I think we would have to have a, some kind of staff report on how to pull this together. I know this isn't the standard thing for the city. It is a complex issue. And so I would hope that I get support from the rest of council to ask for a, a staff report to, to come back in a couple of weeks on how we might accomplish this.
Great, thank you. Before I go to council, I'm just going to ask staff to provide background information. Who's providing that for me? Our engineers? Oh, our director of engineering. Pardon me.
Thank you, your worship. As I, I have been tasked by your interim CIO to provide some background with regard to coastline erosion to help form some context with regard to councillor Parkinson's motion. From nineteen eighty-six to twenty eighteen, thirteen studies on coastline erosion have been undertaken by the city. Very recently, the successful proponent of phase one of the coastline erosion study included previous studies as a background, as background information for review. The work produced by NHC, who was the successful consultant, in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, built upon and compared current data against previous studies that have been undertaken. The most recent consultant was chosen due to significant expertise in coastal and dredging engineering, coastal geomorphology, and hydrology, much of which was specific to Vancouver Island and Victoria. This year, phase two of the coastline erosion study starts with work undertaken in the form of a Masters of Science in Coastal and Marine Management student, whose thesis advisor has a PhD in coastal processes and geomorphology, and he works as an adjunct professor at UVIC. Engineering staff are also working with Royal Roads University this year for a seabed analysis of the Coburg Peninsula. And council has directed long-range planning staff to undertake a study to determine the impacts of coastal erosion and sea level rise, and propose appropriate flood construction levels and setbacks, which will be used to develop recommendations as part of Callwood's Climate Adaptation Plan. Development Services staff are also currently awaiting five consecutive years of erosion studies at Royal Bay undertaken by Seacliff. As such, staff are a bit uncertain as to what the committee would be looking into for the coastline. Sorry, let me restart that. As such, staff are uncertain what the committee to look into coastline erosion might undertake at this point in time. It may well be prudent to wait for the remaining studies that staff from various divisions are currently working on that all stitch together for an overall framework to proceed or not with such a committee. The information that I have outlined in conjunction with other senior staff notwithstanding, staff are obviously willing to undertake any tasks that council and the CIO agree add value. And we collectively thank you for the opportunity to provide input into this motion.
Thank you. Staff, so I will bring it back to council's, the table. What's the will of council? Councillor Baxter, then Day?
I just have a question on, on that. The, the further studies that are going on led you to suggest that it would be better to wait until when? I didn't pick up a date there.
Oh, I'm sorry. So currently this year, we have phase two of the coastline erosion study. We also would, we also have the opportunity to receive five consecutive years of erosion studies at Royal Bay, which we do not currently have as yet, but we should have them by the end of the year.
Yeah, I get all that. I'm just saying, what date are you suggesting we should wait until?
I, I don't have a specific date. What, what senior staff are suggesting is that we would have the information that we currently are undertaking studies in prior to having a committee to be able to look at them and sift through that data.
So we don't have a date for the completion of those studies?
Two of them are not through my department, so unfortunately, no, I can't provide you with that information.
Thank you.
Councillor Day?
Thank you. I just would like clarification on what the plan is this year with regard to placing the sand. Is that something that is being undertaken, or is that something that is on hold?
Through your worship, I believe it is currently on hold. It did form a part of a business study that went through to council for consideration with regard to budget. And I don't believe that that is currently in our budget at present.
Sorry, I'm just going to wait for, councillor Day, do you have any, another question?
Sorry.
No, yeah, go ahead.
I've just received some clarification. It, the, the placement of sand is in the budget. However, the project is on hold until further notice.
That's good, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Kobayashi?
Thank you very much. I, I personally support councillor Parkinson's idea here. And I'll tell you why. Because everything I've heard so far, I mean, I love academic people. I was one, one time. But then we, as, as, as post-grads went and designed an aircraft that couldn't fly. So, so from a practicality point of view, that's how I feel about this. You know, there, there, we, we have a lot of people within our community that, you know, could, could serve well on, on a committee like this. There's, there's a lot of knowledge, actually, in our community. And so I, I would suggest that, because I'd like to see all aspects of this, not just academic studies. Anyways, that's just my comment.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
I, too, am in support of councillor Parkinson's proposal. And I think that while we await these reports that are forthcoming, there's no reason why this council and some volunteers from our community can't dig in and get their hands dirty and start turning their minds to this. And perhaps then we, we hit the ground running when we do receive this data. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't think this would be a great cost to canvas for some volunteers to sit on a committee. And I have no engineering background, and I cannot offer any insight whatsoever, but there are people in the community that can.
Great. Just before I go to councillor Baxter, I would just like a clarification through our director of finance, because councillor Parkinson mentioned that he was under the impression that if this committee was to be struck, that there's probably should be a budget that would be necessary, especially if there was an outside consultant. Since we've already basically got to the point where we've approved this year's budget, how would that fit? And then I will go to councillor Baxter.
Thank you, your worship. It would highly depend on what the terms of reference end up being. So presumably, should this committee be struck, staff would be tasked with preparing terms of reference and a plan to implement that. And at that time, we look at the financial implications of such. There may be some flexibility within the budget to provide funding starting this year, and, and with perhaps increasing the budget in, in future years. So unable to answer specifically at this point, but certainly it will depend on the staff report that would come.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Baxter, and then, excuse, sorry, you've spoken once, correct?
No.
Not on this subject?
No.
Then Baxter, then Logan.
I just want to clarify that the, the motion proposes asking for a report on striking a committee. So for instance, the information we've heard from staff here today could have been in that report. And there's, there's no proposal to have a resolution here tonight to actually strike a committee. I support getting the report, and I will likely support creating the committee. But I think that there is clearly a lot of information that to go in this report, both as to how to strike the committee and what, what is already available. And, you know, how we are going to determine the terms of reference of such a committee in detail. So I think there's every reason to go to the report, and we'll see where we go from there.
Excellent. And just so you know, I have your name on the list. You did speak to this item, fella.
You asked the question.
Councillor Logan.
Thank you, your worship, and I thank councillor Baxter for, for that explanation. What I was trying to rationalize in my own mind is how, what this committee, what work this committee would do when we've got work that's undergoing in, in, in the second stage of the study down at Lagoon, and staff going, that's going to be privy to the, the work that Royal Bay has done already. So, and will be handing over, I'm, I'm assuming, to the city in the near future. So, so I, I guess this report would, would detail how, A, they would either conflict or marry together, or benefit the municipality in, in some way. My, my fear is that we'd be stepping on a whole lot of toes, and, and it's clear that engineering isn't quite clear yet on, on what the purpose of, of such a committee would be. And, and I think we need that clarity and, and, and have those lines drawn, and with some very specific measurables going forward, and objectives. And, and I, I'm, I'm just not sure what those objectives are yet with all this other work that's kind of being undertaken at the same time. So, you know, perhaps that report will provide some, some additional clarity.
Great. I, I am going to go to councillor Parkinson, then councillor Day, and then I'm going to ask for a motion.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yes, I, I, I recognize what, what staff's saying and what we're hearing around here, that this is perhaps a, a, a novel and, and perhaps somewhat hard-to-structure committee. But I'm not persuaded by the fact that there's ongoing work, because there will always be stuff. I mean, there's always an excuse to wait for just that next piece of information, you know? At some point, you have to go, let's start looking at it. And it could well be that, you know, it's going to take a committee a long time to familiarize itself with the numerous reports that have been made already, the decisions that have been made. My understanding of the decision on the, the sand on the beach was that it is in the capital plan, but it's one of those items, we'll be talking about it later tonight, to not be initiated until it comes back to council, you know, for approval. So again, how do we make that decision? And then this is one of the things that we're going to struggle with. There, there, there's not going to be a black or a white answer to these things. There, it's going to be a shade of gray. And so I just believe that we need to, to move forward. And I don't, I hope staff doesn't take it as me criticizing anything that they are doing or have doing. I just think that there are going to be some really hard, tough decisions to be made down there. And the sooner we wrap our heads around them and look at them at, at this level is important.
Thank you. Councillor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of having the report come to a future committee, simply because we can't make a decision without input anyways. And I, I just wanted to make a note for staff that one of the things that I would like the report to answer is what additional data do we need? Because some of the data that we're waiting for was supposed to be there years ago, and, and it's part of that competing problem of so many things to do and so little time for staff. So it's definitely become more of an issue as climate change has become clearer and clearer and more of an imminent threat. You know, we are looking at climate emergency status, that, that is the, what the CRD has invoked at this point in time, based on, on the data points that they're looking at. So I think it is really important that we understand not only what we have, what would we like to have.
Thank you. I'm going to look to a motion. May I have a mover, please, of some? Thank you. May I have a seconder? Moved by councillor Baxter, seconded by, I'm going to give it to Parkinson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. Recommendation number two, councillor Parkinson. Did you want to introduce it? I, I do have a note here to say that staff have been preparing for this workshop. So for a motion to adopt it as presented is, is what we're going to probably recommend anyways. But why don't you introduce it?
Seems kind of pointless, but why not?
Sorry.
I guess a politician's supposed to like to talk, isn't he?
Yeah. I want to take that opportunity away.
So I, I, just, the, the OCP has recommended a significant number of studies, and I think perhaps fourteen of them were categorized as being of immediate priority or very soon. And, and of that, the first one, the population projections, that's been completed already. And I think that's probably a good one to start with, is, you know, how many people are going to be here over what timeframe, so you can start planning all the rest of them. I just think that these studies, they're all kind of interrelated. They're all there for a reason. And they're all going to come to this table at some point. And I believe it would be very useful for us as a council to really understand a little bit more about what those studies are. I mean, there's sort of a couple of lines in the OCP that we can follow, how they all knit together, and, and what's the correct order that they're in. So, you know, for instance, obviously, if you're going to do transportation modeling, it's good to have some population projections first and make sure it's good to have some population projections first, and make sure those are tied together. So that's all. I, you know, it sounds like staff's all over this. I don't think it's probably anything new, but I think it would be useful for us at the table to know what's being done and where it's coming from.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Parkinson. So yes, so staff, if you see the recommendation, staff have been preparing for this workshop, and a motion to adopt it is well within the spheres of where staff are at. So are you going to move that?
Move that.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Counselor Day, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just, I realize that on this particular one, we are definitely gazing into our crystal ball, which is sometimes foggy, or sometimes a storm rolls in and it gets foggy, because something happens. So I was just going to suggest that staff could perhaps ID triggers for moving up the priority ladder. So if this happens, you know, this one needs to maybe jump the queue. Might be an option for helping us to determine our priority order.
All right. I think staff can take that as direction as well. If there's no other comments, then I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And then, sorry, there's also a recommendation for consideration regarding sewers. So that's 9.2. That there was a recommendation from Committee of the Whole that a sewer capital levy fee not be implemented in the 2019 tax rate bylaw, and that it be brought back to the 2020 budget deliberations. May I have a motion to that effect? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Kobayashi, seconded by Counselor Day. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll, oh, excuse me, Counselor Parkinson.
Boss. So when it came up this time in the budget deliberations, we were also juggling a whole bunch of other things, and perhaps didn't have the focus to wrap our heads around it, to be frank. And so before it comes again, I'd like to sort of toss out some food for thought. And I don't have the numbers right, but I think the principles is there, that currently there's probably 5,000 people on sewer in Callwood, and a system that's designed for, I'm going to say, 15,000 people. And that system is designed and paid for by the people who use it, and some of the people who plan to use it in the future, or plan to sell to people who will use it in the future. So that's fine, and some of these things are now coming up and they're getting paid for already, so the thought is, well, okay, let's start now collecting for replacement costs. And I think this council should struggle a little bit with the fairness of somebody, those 5,000 people have paid for the sewer system now, and now we're asking the 5,000 to start paying for the next one that's going to serve as 15,000, and what's the right time to kick that in? Should we wait until, you know, the sewers are, you know, at capacity or close to capacity before we start charging people for the replacement, or should we do it before they're even full? And it's just, you know, there's different funding mechanisms that we looked at on how it might do and what's the fairness, but that's what I'd like to approach it from, is what's the fair and equitable way to do this? I think we all recognize that putting money away to rebuild them at some point in the future is wise and prudent, but, you know, at some point, we say, how many times do you pay for sewers before somebody else uses them? That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Parkinson. Yeah, and we've got a year for our Director of Finance to work on that for us. Counselor Baxter.
I just want to point out, and staff will correct me if I'm wrong, but this is not about capacity, this is about things wearing out. The money that's being put aside is to replace the existing sewers, and pumps, and pumphouses, and manholes, and valves, et cetera, when they wear out. The capacity issue is a completely separate body of funding.
You may.
Yeah, I get that, Michael, but it's really a question of who's paying when, and I think both you and I aren't expecting major replacement of the city's sewer infrastructure for many years, so we have some time.
All right. Stop yelling at each other. Yeah, that's right. I'm going to call the question unless there's any other discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 9.3, Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities Late Resolution Regarding the West Shore RCMP Under Funding By the Province. At the March 4th, 2019 Committee of the Whole meeting, council discussed bringing, or committee, I guess, discussed bringing forward a resolution to UBCM asking the province to look at the provincial funding for policing. Staff have drafted a resolution for consideration. Late resolutions will be accepted up to noon on April 10th through the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities. If endorsed by AVICC, the resolutions are forwarded to UBC Convention for Consideration. The draft resolution, excuse me, resolution provided in the agenda is also being presented to councils of Langford and View Royal for consideration to be submitted as a late resolution to AVICC. Should council endorse this resolution this evening, or amend it and endorse it, I will be presenting this on behalf of council at the conference. Also, just to note, we did receive a letter from the premier, which I did forward, saying that he was in support of increased funding. And then I have also spoken to our MLA, Mitzi Dean, who has also said that she will also be providing a letter that the province should be funding West Shore RCMP, and that they recognize there is an underfunding. So we do have a recommendation for consideration, and I'm just looking for a mover, seconder, and then discussion.
I'd like to move it.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Discussion, Counselor Day.
The only other question that I had was in establishing support for this resolution that we might want to include some documentation to AVICC in support, and we may want to have a few copies prepared to take to the convention, so that people understand. I tried to help a little bit with the wording, so that it's transferable to other communities, not just our particular situation, so.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen, and then.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I won't be going to AVIC, but I appreciate this on behalf of our communities in the West Shore. This has gone on for some time, this underfunding, and I think that not only the result, the result of this is obviously the staffing report that we recently reviewed with the RCMP, and I do think it behooves us as a council and a community that we monitor this on a yearly or bi-yearly, bi-annual basis, because as our communities grow, these, our smaller neighbors are going to be faced with the same situation. I suspect that we'll have to review this on a regular basis. I wholeheartedly endorse this. We are augmenting some of our neighboring, smaller communities with our resourcing, and budgets are tight, and, you know, we recently approved funding, our community did, for two officers to support our population, and unfortunately, those officers are going to be drawn to some of our neighbors because of this underfunding. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kobayashi.
Thank you very much, your worship. Just furthermore, to what Counselor Jensen was saying, we have to have an agreement right now. I think part of your discussion with the province is to have that automatic mechanism, so that we don't have to spend the time and the money and resources that we do every year arguing this. It's ridiculous. You know, there is a formula here, and if we can get them to agree to it, then we don't have to do this every year. So I just think part of your lobbying and your presentation, I think that's an important aspect of it.
Yeah, that is a very good one. Yeah, thank you. Any, anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 9.4, 342 Whale Road, developmental variance permit. At the March 13th, 2019 Advisory Planning Commission meeting, the commission recommended to vary the parking for a six-story, 124-unit affordable rental apartment building proposed at 342 Whale Road. The variance is to relax the minimum number of parking stalls from 1.3 parking stalls per dwelling to approximately 1.0 parking stalls per dwelling. Until, yeah. We do have staff is here to answer any questions, and we also do have a recommendation for consideration. So looking to Counsel, Counselor Baxter, then Kobayashi.
Move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Baxter. Do I have a second? Sure. Seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Day, and then Jensen.
Thanks. I just want to be clear, I generally have a very hard time supporting parking variations, because once there is no parking, then there is no parking. It's very hard to retroactively address that issue, so it's really important that we get it right. And I really feel that because this is affordable housing in a very transit-oriented area with lots of amenities nearby, that it is very supportable in this particular case. Not every case would necessarily be the same, it would really depend on the target market. So I am supportive, and I just want to be clear why.
Great, thank you. Counselor Jensen.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I share some of the same concerns. We hear regularly about the pressures of neighborhood parking, and if the builder's not providing enough spots, that forces it out onto neighboring streets, and as we know, there's some significant construction that's going to go on for a number of years in that area. However, I did have a question of staff, and it doesn't really specify what kind of rentals these are. Is this, are these single-unit rentals? Is there multi-bedroom? Is it an assortment? Because if it's, you know, a three-bedroom home with two parents and a family, then it's likely they may have two cars. I'd love to hear what that breakdown.
I will look to Planner Lucision. See, I was practicing your last name all day.
Thank you, your worship. Through the chair, this particular proposal has a one-bedroom quantity of 70, two-bedroom, 42 units, and then there'll be 12 three-bedroom units. That's what the parking study was based upon.
Does that help at all?
That's interesting. I think, although I do hesitate to muddle around too much with the parking, I can see the value of this location and the walkability and the access to transit, so I don't see why I wouldn't support this.
Great, thank you. Counselor Kobayashi, then Baxter.
Through the mayor. Just a quick question. So do we use a different standard for, just from my own education, is there a different standard that we do use for affordable housing units, then?
Through your worship, the, some municipalities do have an affordable housing line item for their parking standards. We don't have that. This particular zone had a parking ratio of 1.3, and they're asking for a variation to 1.0.
Counselor Baxter.
I have a question for staff, too. Do we have any condition upon development at any stage that stops construction, you know, subs coming to the site or whatever from parking on the streets nearby? Because we used to, the city used to require that the developer provide parking onsite or an offsite location elsewhere. Do you know if that still applies?
Through the chair, if I may just saddle up a chair here. There will be a requirement prior to building permit for the developer to demonstrate how they can meet some of their parking requirements for their trades. However, this site is very, very tight, and I don't think that'll be achievable on this site. Thankfully, there is space in the nearby neighborhood that we'd encourage the developer to speak with and reach out. The city wouldn't act as their broker on behalf, but may put them in line with people. There is some street parking available on Wilford that for temporary impact for the construction would possibly deal with it.
I hear the word encourage, so we're not in a position to require?
As a condition of the development permit and as a condition of the variance, by all means, we can do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. I would strongly recommend that for a number of reasons. There are some great amenities in this area. Other affordable housing, which is currently undergoing renovations as well, is causing significant dilemmas that I've heard a lot about in terms of parking demand in the area. Also, the children's center is often at max capacity for parking, so if there's a meeting at the children's center, it can make it very, very difficult. So street parking on Whale Road is often unable to be found during the daytime. And so if we could do something to address the issue that will come during the construction time, I think that would be very beneficial.
Thank you. That doesn't need to be in the motion, I'm looking to staff. That is, that's just common direction. Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Moving on to 9.5, Corporate Communications Manager Regarding Beach Food Fridays and Saturday Location of 2019. Council Direction Is Required on the Location of the 2019 Beach Food Friday and Saturday Events at the Callwood Waterfront. Relocating the event closer to the bridge end of the waterfront would increase visibility and attendance at the events. The Corporate Communication Manager is available here for any questions. And we do have a motion that you've seen as well. Counselor Baxter.
I move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. I need a second. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Logan. Counselor Day.
Thank you. I would like to move just a little amendment, that the new porta-potties be accessible and gender neutral, because that's a big issue down there.
Okay, that's an amendment, so.
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Just the amendment, this is just about the bathrooms. Seeing none, then I'll call the vote on the bathrooms. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Back to the original motion, Counselor Day, and then Kobayashi.
Sorry, just one other point, and because I haven't had a chance to bring it forward with staff, I simply throw it out there, maybe we could get some feedback from staff at a future meeting. But just in regards to, there is the Accessible Arts Center down on the lagoon. There is also supposed to be a designated accessible parking spot right by it, which is often overrun during these events. So I've been asked by members of the Disabilities Committee to bring that forward, and when we built the accessible art space with grant funding that we received back in 2010, I think, 2008, 2010, we built it such that more accessible picnic tables could be added at a future date. And I would love to see us look at how and when we might be able to increase the number of accessible picnic tables that are there, because they're very, very popular, both with the disabled and with the able-bodied.
Thank you. I'm just going to look at staff, if they have a comment regarding that at all, or is that's just good? You're good, okay. Counselor Kobayashi?
Yes, through the chair. A question for Sandra. Sandra, do we, do we charge those food trucks a license every time they park their truck there, or do we give them one for the whole entire season?
It's one seasonal license.
And is that enough to cover all the washrooms, then?
It will be more than enough to cover the cost of the washrooms.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Counselor Parkinson.
As a guy who walks down to the beach, you know, I'm concerned, me and my neighbor's going to have a longer walk, but we'll tough, we'll tough it out for the good of the city. But that's true, I don't know for how long, but I think we shouldn't lose track of the suggestion we had earlier, that if we're going to move the location, we should be adding new picnic tables at this location, not moving the existing ones. And just, so hopefully that's coverable within the budget, if that's a word.
So just as a clarification, staff, can you speak to that?
We actually have quite a big stock of picnic tables in the back in Public Works that we can add more to the new location, and I think keep some in the current location.
Great. So I have one question to you, is we've heard comments regarding accessibility. So, I have one question to you, is we've heard comments regarding accessibility and that. Are we planning on adding accessibility parking spots that presently wouldn't exist in the middle of there? So, is there a plan that way?
To be honest, that hadn't been planned, but it's an excellent suggestion and shouldn't be difficult to do.
Wow, I like that. I like when staff talk like that to me. Excellent discussion. Thank you. Councillor Baxter.
I just wanted to let you know that once we've dealt with this motion, I have a follow-up motion.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anything else on this motion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried? And I will go to councillor Baxter.
I've actually talked to a couple of members of staff about this idea, and been informed that they've already been working in this vein. So, I propose that staff be asked to bring forward a report in time for the May 6th Committee of the Hall, presenting some preliminary ideas on how the large number of people coming to Colwood for Beach Food Fridays and Eats and Beats can be persuaded to patronise Colwood businesses, or at least be informed, both at the events and through advertising, of the existence of Colwood businesses which they might patronise in the future. And I say, I've given a fairly short timeline there, and that's because I'm just saying preliminary ideas. This is an idea that I'm suggesting would be pursued further following this initial report.
Great, thank you. I have a seconder, so any discussion? I'm going to look to staff.
So, just to let you know, what we've done so far is, when the business licence renewal forms went out to all the businesses, a piece was added to that to say, these events are happening, and if you're interested in participating or sponsoring in any way, please get in touch. So, that was the first step, and now that we have all our dates set, we will do that again. We'll send that out to businesses again. And the second thing we started to do last year was to create a sign, sort of in our Driftwood style, that listed some of the names of the local businesses, and so it would say something like, after Beach Food, go up and have a beer at the Tap House, or something like that, so that we would start to do some of that work. But I look forward to more ideas about how we can generate that kind of conversation.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Moving on, 9.6, Corporate Communication Manager Regarding a Grant Application for the Urban Communities Partnership for Reconciliation. Council approval is required to apply to the Urban Communities Partnership for Reconciliation UCPR pilot project for funding up to $10,000 to host an indigenous reconciliation event or activity. I'm going to just look to our communications officer if you have any other questions regarding that application. So, councillor Day.
Thank you. This is great, great minds were thinking alike, because I also noticed this grant coming up and had looked at how we might take advantage of it. I did earlier this year attend the Victoria Urban Reconciliation Dialogue at the Native Friendship Centre, and it's been very clear to me at a number of indigenous events that I've attended, that there is great interest in the indigenous communities to spreading the word about reconciliation, because there's a lot of misconceptions about indigenous practices, culture, history, and there's a great desire that I'm hearing within the community to learn more about that, so to kind of bridge that gap. So, I'm just very hopeful that if we're successful in getting this grant, we will be able to have some components that reach out to the community members as a whole.
Thank you. Can I just get a motion first? We do have a.
Move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Baxter, seconded by councillor Day. Further discussion, councillor Parkinson.
So, I think like everybody, I think that reconciliation is something you probably can't do too much of, and happy to participate, get to know our friends and neighbours better. But here's my concern. We're asking somebody else for $10,000, so we can then go and hire somebody to set up a dinner with some people, and it sounds like we might even be paying people to include and compensate cultural leaders, elders, traditional knowledge. When we talked about, you know, we should strengthen our bonds with the First Nations, and, you know, we should have some dinners and stuff, I guess I had pictured the mayor picking up the phone and calling the chief and saying, why don't you get some of your guys, and I'll get some of my guys, we'll go have dinner, and, you know, pick up the tab. I'm just not sure that this is a path that works for me, to be perfectly honest. I just, it's taking money from other people and giving it to other people, and, you know, paying people to come have dinner with us, you know, it just doesn't sit right. Really, let's just go have dinner with them and, you know, split the tab.
Councillor Kobayashi.
You have some learning to do, councillor Parkinson. It's, that is the way that we, in our culture, the western culture, would do it, and unfortunately, as I have learned, that's not necessarily how they do it. So, it's just a friendly reminder, that's it.
Thank you. Any staff? Sandra? Or, excuse me. Communications officer.
I guess I just wanted to mention that, so there's two different things going on here, and council-to-council dinners is one thing, and we're pursuing that with the Squamup Nation. The previous council hosted a council-to-council dinner with Songhe's Nation, so that's one aspect. This funding would be more for a separate sort of a thing, and it's about building a deeper understanding about the path that indigenous people have been on to get to this point, and our role in that, and that kind of education. And this funding would allow us to invite the broader community into that conversation so that we're deepening our understanding together. So, council-to-council dinners being one thing, and more along the lines of what you're saying, of the mayor going down and saying, let's break bread together and spend some time together. This is a little bit of a separate sort of education event.
And, sorry, I'll come to you too. And just as a quick update on that as well, there is every intention of, I was fortunate enough last week to be a witness for the Songhe's Nations when they received an award for innovation at the Camosan College. The Squamup Band is going through a period right now where they're transitioning from being a hereditary band to possible elected band, and they're going to be having an election on that. The issue was, we were hoping that that election was going to happen sooner than later. It was scheduled for June, and it sounds now that it's being pushed back to September. And so, that just creates some difficulties in the short term. So, this isn't about me not doing it or following up with it, it's that they're working out some of their own personal processes before we'll be able to engage on a council-to-council level. So, that's where we're at with that. Councillor Day.
Thanks. I just wanted to offer that on the learning curve, I am organising with the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee blanket exercise for members of the committee to participate in, which is a really wonderful opportunity to learn about their traditional knowledge keepers and their experiences under colonial rule. And that's happening on April 23rd, and if any member of council is interested in joining us, I may be able to secure you a spot.
Thank you. I will, unless there's other discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried? That leaves us to bylaws. Excellent. So, we're in bylaws, 10.1, Bylaw Number 1760, Five-Year Financial Plan. The Director of Finance will provide an overview of the 2019 to 2023 Financial Plan Bylaw Report. After the discussion, the bylaws will be presented to council for consideration for the first three readings. Councillor Baxter? Or, councillor Baxter, sorry. I guess you don't want to pronounce it or provide it to us. Our Director of Finance?
Thank you, worship. The bylaw, that's before council represents the sum of discussions held between January through the end of March. The number of adjustments that were adopted by council are reflected in the Financial Plan Bylaw, namely, new construction revenue has been revised with more accurate estimates, and the use of that new construction revenue has been allocated to increased staffing and the RCMP detachment, both in strength size and municipal employees. The remainder of that new construction taxation revenue has been used to increase our transfers to reserve for sustainable infrastructure. Furthermore, council provided direction to staff to include a capital project for council's chamber reorganisation. Staff will be forthcoming with a report on options, what can happen there. And then the sewer levy, as per the recent resolution, has been removed from projections in there. Staff, note a number of items that do exist in the bylaw, but spending will not occur without further council and public engagement, namely, Latoria Creek Stairway Replacement, the Coburg Peninsula Beach Nursery Capital Project, and some of the fleet replacement. To talk specifically about the Latoria Creek Stairway Replacement Plan, the staff is planning to go out for RFP. Should council go, or should staff go forward with RFP, and council then choose, decide not to proceed with that, it can create some legal procurement challenges. So, the plan right now is for staff to come forward with more details to council to get a stronger endorsement prior to RFP. So, overall, the financial plan results in a 2.9% general taxation increase, which is approximately $53 to the average residential property tax player, and that's only for property taxes within municipal control, so it doesn't include the CRD, CRHD, BC Assessment, MFA, and other, and the school tax. Thank you very much.
So, I will look to council. Does council have any questions before we go to bylaws? Councillor Day.
No questions. I just wanted to congratulate our Director of Finance for bringing forward the budget this year. We have been on time, we have looked at capital replacement plans, and we've managed to do that coming in under 3%, which is, I think, quite an amazing accomplishment, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Then, oh, I'm sorry, councillor Baxter.
I have a question for staff. I believe you were going to include options for lower business taxes?
Through your worship, so the tax rate discussion would occur at the first, second, third, or even the tax rate bylaw, which would be April 23rd. And so, it's less of a budgetary discussion, it's more of a discussion about shifting taxes to which property class. Mind you, to be candid, I don't anticipate we will be able to have a robust enough conversation at that time for changes to occur for this taxation year. Certainly possible, but it's a difficult and complicated conversation. So, I'll bring forward some information to that at the April 23rd tax rate bylaw, and I look forward to seeing what council has to say about that. Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Councillor Logan.
Thank you, worship. I'll move receipt of the Director of Finance's report.
Great, thank you. Seconder? Seconded by councillor Jensen. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. All right, moving on then, I need a, we're at Bylaw Number 1760, Five-Year Financial Plan, 2019.
Move introduction, your worship.
Thank you. I need a seconder. Seconded by councillor Kobayashi. All those in favour? Opposed? Carried? Second. Thank you. Moved by councillor Kobayashi. Seconded by councillor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favour? Opposed? Carried? Thank you.
Second, third.
Did you get those? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favour? Opposed? Carried? Motion to go in camera?
So, moved.
Thank you. I need a seconder. Thank you, councillor Jensen. All those in favour?